I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag
The United States of America And to the Republic for which it stands A nation under God
One nation
Indivisible
Indivisible
Liberty and justice for all
With liberty
Liberty and justice
Thank you, everyone. Alright. So. Kristin, any addition or deletions?
Um, this is Kristin. So just friendly reminder, everybody, the meeting is being recorded for PEG TV. Um, so just before to identify who you are when speaking. So this is Kristin. In terms of additions or deletions, I have no formal additions this evening. My only proposed deletion was I have nothing new to report as of today about the security grant that I had, I've been looking into. Um, so just no update yet. So I propose that that is deleted from the agenda for this meeting if that's okay with the board.
Sounds good.
Um, Mike, this is Jessica. I would like to, in new business, can we address the West Polat Wi-Fi? Yes, I spoke with that guy this morning. Okay, great.
Oh, excellent. That would be a good spot for that. Thank you, Jessica. Okay. Uh, Kristin, could you introduce everyone, please?
Sure. So this is Kristin. Uh, members in attendance this evening, we have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Bob Jones, Jessica Van Ort, and Rich Hewlett. Others in attendance, we have myself, Kristin Powers, Deb Hawkins, Julie Mack, Chuck Whedon, Harry, who I think is maybe Harry Van Meter, um, Harley Cudney, Tom Collard, Frank Nelson, Jonas Rosenthal, Colin Stabile, I believe. Oh, yeah, you changed your name, Colin. Um, Paul Talander, Keith Mason, and someone else is, I'm entering into the room now as iPad 7. So, um, perhaps we'll hear from them, but that is the list as it stands right now of attendees. If I've forgotten anybody or if I've gotten anybody's name wrong, feel free to identify yourselves now.
Okay, sounds good. And approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Anybody have any questions? Oh, Kristin?
Sorry, just one quick thing. Um, Tom Collard was at the last meeting and I forgot to put his name on the attendance list, so I've added that and that's one addition that I'd like to have noted.
Okay, thank you. I looked, I scanned him over. It looked, they all looked good to me. Did anybody, John?
Yes, on the part B, the accessory report, um, I think, uh, it should be worded that statutory exemptions, uh, it should be read non-statutory exemptions are voted every five years. The 20 years ago statutory exemptions, we don't vote on such as the cemeteries, the town hall. But the non-statutory are the two firehouses, the fishing game land, and the Mason Lodge. Do you get that?
Hey?
Yes, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have anything that they saw that they wanted to correct or comment on? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
This is Jessica. I'll second John's motion.
Okay, John and Jessica have made a motion and second to approve the minutes. All in favor. John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Well, she carried. Pre-requested. Nobody's listed. Correct?
That's correct. This is Kristin. There have been no pre-requested appearances this evening.
Announcements. Any announcements?
There are no announcements from, from my desk.
Okay. Zoning Administrator Jonas.
Hey. So, as you know, that we've received a zoning application uh, from Daniel Banyer and several questions have come up. And one of those questions was, how can the town, uh, issue a permit if he's in violation of other permits? So, I had asked the town attorney, actually Merrill Benz on maternity leave, so Rob Wellington. I, I was referred to Rob Wellington, who was with the, with the office. So his response, and I forwarded that on to the, uh, to Mike Beecher, several other folks. I'm not sure if that's all been disseminated, but it says, he said, Rob Wellington says, unless the Polit bylaws express expressly provide that no permit can be issued for a property with a pending violation, I know of no Vermont authority to allow denial of a permit on that basis unless there is such a provision, uh, then I agree that these are separate issues. So, two weeks ago, maybe going on three weeks ago, I'll tell you the date. On March 24th, we, I received a zoning application and I approved it on 3/31 and I'll go through that application. Uh, the permit application was for an accessory use or building. And that's listed in a permitted use in almost every zoning district. And if I recall, he's either in the five acre zoning district or industrial. I don't have the map in front of me. Uh, that use is permitted. I did ask him. Um, I asked him, I received your permit application today for the accessory use of a building. For clarification, what is the building going to be used for? I.e. storage, commercial use? He responded, storage. So on the 31st, like I said, I issued that permit. The applicant, the letter that goes along with it, it says, Dear Mr. Banyer, enclosed is your permit issued for the purpose of constructing a 30 by 20 storage building that has been approved by the zoning administrator on March 31st. This permit does not become effective until 15 days have passed after its approval by the zoning administrator and not until the resolution of any properly filed appeals. Please post the enclosed permit 15 days on your property visible from the road. Uh, permits issued based on the decision of zoning manager, zoning administrator may be appealed to the Polit Development Review Board by written notice within 15 days as per the rules in the Polit zoning ordinance, Article 9, Section 8, appeals to the board. Uh, I had a letter, I had five letters. I ran the, uh, abutters report. I ran, there were five abutters. Uh, I issued, I issued, I sent them letters uh, telling them they had, here's, here's the application that I received. You have 15 days if you, if you have 15 days if you wish to appeal. So, uh, the, if I could go through the permit application, I did hear from one potential appellant. Um, the question, one of the questions was, well, he, how could he get the permit because he doesn't have the road frontage? Well, if you go to the, if you go to the zoning ordinance, it doesn't require a minimum lot frontage. It requires a minimum lot width. So, um, that 30-foot right-of-way is, is frontage and there are many lots in, if you look at the property maps, there are many lots that have rights of way through back, backlots. So the definition of frontage, the boundary of a lot along a traveled way or public waters or along public waters. So, again, in the zoning district, it only refers to minimum lot front, excuse me, minimum, minimum lot width, not frontage. So those are, are, um, two distinctions, sometimes confusing. Um, what else about the permit? So the, the, if you look at the map that he provided, he provided, uh, the distances, the setbacks on a, certainly met the 25-foot setbacks to property lines. Oh, let me, let me just go back to lot frontage or lot width. I'm sorry, lot width. So the lot width is over 900 feet. Um, like I said, the right-of-way is only 30 feet. The state requires a minimum of 20 feet. So, um, if I, and I went on the map, the, uh, atlas, uh, that the town has, and he has a 30-foot right-of-way. But again, the distances are listed on that Google Earth map. There are some things I could check further on, but, and I'll get into that in a minute. So it meets all the setbacks. It meets the minimum lot width. Use is there. The use is a permitted use in that zoning district. The only thing that I'm a little confused on is the frontage on public road. He's got 261 feet. I, I, I can't, I guess I have to go back to the map and figure out if there's another road that he has frontage on, on a road. I'm not, I'm not sure because I don't have the map in front of me. So I could investigate that. He wrote setback from right-of-way. He's got 30 feet. The structure that's on the map is not setback 30 feet from the right-of-way. I think he's confused. I think there's confusion. He does have a 30-foot right-of-way, but the proposed structure is well beyond that 30 feet. So, um, question came up. Is this 30 by 20 by 10 the same structure, uh, that he had applied for? Um, I guess a variance, maybe? I'd have to look at the filings. I would like to set up a meeting, uh, and again, I've got to ask, and I've asked Mike. I'd be glad to go up there and inspect the site before construction. Um, just get me, just get me, um, well, I know I talked to the state police today. They actually called me. They actually called me and, uh, so they're not going to help, but. So if we have a local constable and we have more than, uh, uh, two people go, uh, I'd certainly, I'd certainly go. But as everybody is concerned about public safety as I am and my wife, you know, that's why I'm requesting, you know, escort. So I will make that request for Mr. Banyer to set up a time Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. Uh, as long as the select board can find somebody to go along with me. Uh, actually, two people. I don't want to get in this he said, I said stuff, battles, and so on. Uh, so if somebody wants to file an appeal, oh, that was one other thing. I'm sorry. Um, I had asked, uh, Mr. Wer, Wilmington, Mr. Wilmington, a question regarding, uh, I'll find it in a second here. The decision, okay, the decision by the court that he provide a, uh, evidence of a contract for a licensed surveyor within 30 days, which would have been April 5th. He filed an appeal on March 24th to, um, to the court, to the environmental court, uh, requesting another 30 days. So the judge granted that 30 days and now it's to May 5th. Now, in that letter or in the court hearing, excuse me, the court decision, Mr., uh, the, the, uh, judge, uh, I'll tell you his name in a second here. Uh, Thomas Durkin, uh, allowed that, uh, his request, but he was not sure that he was, Mr. Mr. Banyer was going to appeal the decision of the court to the Supreme Court or whether he was going to request additional time to, uh, have a, uh, contract with a licensed surveyor to do all the inspections to, to lay out a site plan and everything else. Um, so that's unclear. I was hoping that that would clear up the, the question, is this permit for an existing building? But since he's filed an appeal requesting an additional 30 days, you know, again, I'll go up there, somebody set up a time Monday, Wednesday, or Friday with, uh, at least two people. Um, glad to go up there. Also, um, waiting for an appeal. Um, I, I heard from, uh, uh, one, uh, one, one person that they want to appeal the permit, which is fine. What that does, that allows the DRB to hold a hearing uh, within 30 days of the appeal. And then the, uh, DRB has 45 days to issue a decision of that appeal. So if the person who is making the appeal wishes to go that route, you know, um, they, they can do that. Um, but they should state in the appeal, uh, what, uh, what section of the zoning ordinance that, um, uh, they are appealing. If they feel that I've erred, they should state what, what, what I aired. But like I said, the only thing I could think of is that frontage on public road of 261 feet. And maybe, maybe, uh, somebody could answer, is there another road that is property of butts because I don't have that map in front of me?
Jonas, this is Rich.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yes, I can.
Um, it has to be a town, it has to be a town road, correct?
No.
That he's referring to?
Uh, it, no. Um, yeah, turn this up. It, well, wait a second. It says frontage on a public road. Correct. Yes.
That's right. Yeah. So, I mean, there's, there's no other roads back in that property. I do know that.
Okay. So I could, I could, uh, write to Mr. Banyer because the permit is not in effect. And I could say I found a, a, uh, an error. Um, please clarify, please clarify or your permit is null, null and void. And, and again, if somebody wants to appeal my decision, that, uh, uh, we need to hold a hearing within 30 days and then issue a decision within 45 days. So if somebody wants to do that route, that's fine.
Okay.
And Jonas, uh, this is, this, this is Rich. Um, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll volunteer to go up there with you and, uh, you know, we'll see if, does it have to be two selectmen or?
Well, no, I'd like, uh, I'd like a public safety officer. Either a town constable or, or, but I know the state police, uh, we've already had this conversation today that I received out of the blue. It was interesting.
Well, we've got two constables in town that we can contact, so.
Okay.
Steve, Ray. Okay. Jonas, are you all set? Are you ready for questions or?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
All right. Ray, Ray, you have a question?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Uh, Jonas, did you collect $400 from, uh, Banyer for this permit?
Uh, it was 260 some odd dollars.
This is an after the fact, so it's double.
Well, I don't know that the buil, this is the same building, but we'll find out.
Okay. That's one question. Number two, are you familiar with reading blueprints, Jonas?
Somewhat.
Okay, do you realize that this, this, uh, drawing that he presented as part of his building permit is nothing more than a primitive isometric drawing? It's a, it's a view. It's not a drawing. It, it has, it has no depth. It is not a drawing of any structure whatsoever. This is called a primitive isometric view. And it's totally irrelevant and should not be accepted as a blue, as a plan for any building. Because it is not. It, this is absolutely nothing. There's no other way to say it. It's nothing. Now, the next thing I have to ask you is this.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
But I mean, it's a question.
Well, I, 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 I see the dimension here. 20 by 30 by 10.
That doesn't mean anything. It's not a, it's not a structure, Jonas. This is nothing.
Okay.
I was, I was a home builder. I know how to read a blueprint and this is not a blueprint.
The schoolhouse.
This is not a, a, a plan of any structure whatsoever. This was originally drawn in the metric system and then somebody scratched in that it was a 20 by 30, 10-foot high. But it is not a structure. This is not a structure at all. It's a totally irrelevant sketch.
Okay, oh, you, Jonas, could you clarify what the permit says? Do you have a permit in front of you that what, what they, what we asked for?
Yeah, I've got, I've got his permit right here.
What, when, when you get the instructions for the permit, what does it ask for? What's the phrasing of what it asks for?
Well, it asks for the structure size, length, width, and height. It's not, what he did, he did is provided, uh, the drawings and the measurements on this, on this piece of paper here.
And that piece of paper is meaningless piece of paper, Jonas.
Okay, Ray, we've already got that point. Let's, that.
Well, I'm not done, Michael. I'm still, I'm still speaking, Michael. Um, it's, uh,
I know you have a question.
20 by 30 is exactly the same size as the schoolhouse. And that's why we know that it's a pre-existing building.
Well, yeah, I've, I've had this conversation and that's why, uh, we received the application and then we trying to make provisions to go up there.
Did you collect the money for this application, Jonas?
Yes, I did.
Uh, you only collected 200?
$215. So if this was after the fact, then yes, he would owe more money. But I don't know that that's after the fact yet.
Now, my next question is this. Is this for a, uh, a, uh, huh, what's the word I'm looking for? Is this for a, uh, uh, damn. Accessory building or an accessory dwelling?
He's got accessory use or building. And he's clarified, he clarified in the email, storage.
Storage.
Correct.
Okay. Because he has a limited, uh, wastewater permit and water permit for a two, two-bedroom, one-bath residence and nothing more. So I wanted to make sure that that is, is clear.
Well, again, uh, that's what the judge is asked, excuse me, that's what the town asked, uh, the judge to, uh, to have Mr. Banyer provide. Uh, but again, he's asked the court for an extension, 30-day extension.
Now, why, now, my next question is this, Jonas. If he can get an extension for 30 days from the judge, then you should be able to, as a town administrator, get a 30-day extension and hold his permit for 30 days until that time is up with the judge.
A couple of things. If, if the, if the permit's an error, for instance, the frontage on public road, when I ask the question, you know, uh, I can, I can say it doesn't, you know, it's inaccurate and we can start over or we can have somebody, uh, uh, an abutter who got the letter is file a notice of appeal and, um, because the permit doesn't take effect until after all the appeals are heard. And I said that, again, somebody files the appeal, that is third, the DRB has to hold a hearing within 30 days and then they have to issue a decision within 45 days. So hopefully we'll have an appeal.
Well,
if, if I don't get clarification.
Okay, well, first of all, the drawing, the drawing is, is a joke. It's inaccurate. It's, it's nothing. Um, he does not have road frontage at 261 feet. He's got a 30-foot right-of-way. So he actually has 30 feet along Briar, or Briar Hill Road. The width of his right-of-way, that's it.
Right.
Uh, the next thing is this. Um, we as the abutters and we as the neighbors shouldn't have to take this burden on ourselves. This should be done by the town, not us.
Exactly. Exactly. You file, anybody can, any of the abutters can file the appeal and then we have to hold a DRB hearing.
Why is he making us even do that?
Why do we have to file an appeal, Jonas? His, his application is inaccurate. We know that by two issues, his road frontage and his map, his, uh, drawing.
Well, again, I can ask, I can ask for the road frontage, but I'm just saying here in the cover letter, the permit does not become, this, uh, the permit does not become effective until 15 days have passed after its approval by the zoning administrator and not until the resolution of any properly filed appeals. If you don't want to file appeal, that's fine.
Okay, but are you going to go and inspect this site before you approve this? You're, you're already approved it.
That's what I've asked the select board. I'm willing to go up there Monday, Wednesday, or Friday if I have, uh, 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 security or law enforcement.
So you can revoke this if you go up there and find that he's not in compliance?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but, you know, let's hope between, I'd rather, I'd rather get more time. Um, if I don't get a response by April 15th, I can say, you know, I believe that the permit's effective. I don't see 261 feet along a public highway, um, so on, but, um, that doesn't get it to the DRB.
Okay. All right, Jonas.
Jonas, this is Rich.
Answered. Rich, go ahead.
I just, I, I think, I think we just, we need to go up there and see what's going on so that we can, you know, move on whether that building is already there or isn't there.
I get that.
I think that's the only thing that we can do at this point.
Yep. The next course of action. Yes. Okay. Frank, you have a question?
Yeah, uh, Jonas, you might want to clarify that when the application is made that all that is required is the dimensions and we don't have a design review board or design requirements, so you wouldn't need to have blueprints for a building. We just need to have what you're saying. So you may want to clarify that. Thank you.
Need to have a sketch.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So we have the, we have our next, our next, Jessica has a question.
Um, yeah, uh, I also have heard from people who are concerned about this, about this permit. And, um, the people I heard from aren't here tonight, so I just wanted to pass along their concerns, which were that Mr. Banyer has not followed court orders so far. And their concern was the same one that has been expressed by Ray and also by others, that this might be the same building, right? And they're just hoping that the town officials are not going to be either fooled or bullied by Mr. Banyer in this. I'm also expressed my willingness to go up there as well. I mean, I, Rich has already suggested his willingness to go. I don't know if the history between the two of you would cause a problem there, but I mean, I don't have any history with the man, so whatever, everyone thinks is best.
Okay. So this, right now, we have a question. Does the select board, does somebody want to make a motion that Jonas attempt to organize with, with law enforcement a site visit? So that we could go up there.
Mike, this is Rich.
I don't think I need it. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay. So Jonas, you were going, you were saying?
Well, I, I want to do this. I mean, I don't think,
Right.
Want to make a motion, that's fine. I, I'm just going to do this, but I just need the board to identify, you know, law, uh, law enforcement or your constable, you know, to help me set up a time Monday, Wednesday, or Friday.
Okay, so it's something, something that we don't need to necessarily make a motion and vote on. It's just something that, that you can do. You just want us to supply some type of law enforcement.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with Rich's motion. I, I just want to let you know that, that um, I have requested to the board assistance, security assistance, security assistance in visiting the site. Because I don't want to get into a he's, if I go up myself, I don't want to get in this, he said, well, so, so said, and you know, I heard this, I heard that, and become long email battles, you know, uh, it's nice to have witnesses. Um, so we understand, you know, uh, what's being said.
Okay, so I guess we'll follow through on the motion. Does somebody want to second Rich's motion that, that Jonas and law enfor- that we provide law enforcement so Jonas can make a site visit?
This is Jessica. I second.
Jessica will second it.
John and I are on top of things today.
Very good. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so Jonas, you can set up and, and we can get two, two members. Um, Jonas, do you feel that with Rich going as one of the select board members, it may put a twist on, on his actions?
I, I, um, I appreciate Rich's interest in doing this, but I, I would have to aggress, agree with Jessica. Uh, that might put him, um, that might, it might cloudy murk, you know, make the situation
Yeah, okay.
I would say uncomfortable. But I would, uh, no, I certainly appreciate his interest in doing this. Um, but anyway, but, but I, I agree with Jessica.
All right, Kristen, you have a question?
The, just, this is Kristen, just something to offer. I think that as select persons, you should just feel free to reference the conflict of interest document that the boards all acknowledge and see if that pertains as you navigate various situations.
Okay, I, and I, I agree with that, and I think maybe my opinion, Rick, or Rich, is that it may not be the in our best interest if, if you were one of the ones that went up there. Um, this, does anybody else want to volunteer to go up?
Mike, can I jump in here?
Yes, please do, Keith.
Um, two things. If it is appealed and the DRB has to deal with it, we can do a site visit, and we may want to do it under the same circumstances as Jonas is talking about. And a second thing is, uh, there is a fifty foot road frontage requirement, and it's, it's in, uh, Article Five General Regulations, required frontage on or access to public roads. No land developed may be permitted on lots which do not have fifty feet of, excuse me, frontage on public road or needed access to such a road by a permeneasement or right of way at least fifty feet in width. So it's not in the agro-residential, it's in the general regulations, page twenty-three in your unified bylaws, so.
Okay, you up? Okay, thank you.
Twenty-three.
Paul Thailander has his hand up.
Migrations. I'm sorry, I'm looking this on page twenty-three.
Yes.
Where?
Section four.
Okay, my page twenty-three. As section eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Well, we're not looking at the same one, then. We're looking at, uh, we're looking at Article Five General Regulations, Section Four.
Article five, Article five. Wait a second. Okay, I've got Article five. Uh, deals with, okay, construction. What section?
Section four.
As required frontage on or access to public roads. Development on existing small lots. Firement, no land development. Or, well, wait a second, it says or deeded access to such a road by a permeneasement or right of way of at least fifty feet in width, providing permeneasement. And the way incorporates a written agreement maintaining the right of way. Well, then, then how does any, there's lots of lots that have been developed, um, having rights of way of less than, uh, third, uh, less than thirty feet. You look at a lot of these subdivisions. So I'm looking at then section three, is this a development of existing small lots? Does this mean that that lot cannot be developed for anything?
No, I think what it means, Jonas, is that it's considered pre-existing non-conforming, because the right of way was laid out prior to nineteen seventy-two, or whenever the zoning regulations took effect. And I think the DRB's decision on the previous hearing was that, um, that thirty foot right of way was a right of access for his permitted home and, you know, what he was permitted with his, for his septic site. But not, uh, not for a commercial development like he's been using it for.
All right, so if, and, and that's the question I asked, uh, of him. I said, is this for storage or commercial? And he wrote, storage. You know, this is a good question for Merrill and its interpretation, because, um, you know, he did get a permit for an apartment, correct? And something else, I forgot, but in any event, so, so are we saying that he cannot have a storage facility?
Well, I, if it's an accessory to the single residence that is there, then it is probably acceptable. If it's an accessory to a commercial application or a business, it's not.
And that's, I had asked for a clarification in the email.
Right.
Storage. And the other thing, I asked if it was commercial, and, uh, he said it was for storage. Um, what else, uh? So anyway, you have to take a look at the property maps. There are lots of, uh, oh, oh, the other thing in, in the application, he did say it was for accessory. What is it? Accessory building? He took it right out of the, the permit. Accessory number eighteen by law, accessory use or building. You know, that's what was filled out. So again, an inspection, you know, inspection will help for sure.
Okay, so that, that, that's clarified information there. So right now, we're at the point where you're gonna arrange to get a site visit?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you'll let us know and we'll have and we'll have, uh, um, two people accompanying you to that.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul Thailander had his hand up. Paul?
No.
Go ahead. Okay, Ray, you have a question?
Okay. Mike, this is Michelle Thailander. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Michelle. Go ahead.
Finally, okay. First time I've done this, so bear with me. Thank you for your patience, all.
You're welcome.
Um, first of all, I would like to, um, you know, second Rich Hewlett's, um, road frontage comment, and also Keith is right on with that. Um, I've done some research into that, this, and he only has a thirty foot right of way through, um, an abutter's property. He has no road fronters. He's bound on at least four sides by other abutters. Um, so this two hundred and sixty-one, um, is incorrect. Um, the second thing is, um, did, did somebody want to say something about that?
Yeah, I do. I, I, I already made that comment, correct.
Okay, but just, just reinforce my thoughts here. Um, the second thing I wanted to, to ask is I'm looking at his here, and he's got, um, hold on one sec. Hold on, I just take me a minute. For proposed use, accessory use or building. So my question is, is it, is it accessory use? Is it accessory building or is accessory dwelling? If it's accessory building, which I, I assume that's what it is. I don't know. You'll have to define that. Um, it has to be, um, a pertinent to the primary residence, considered the primary. Um, and it has to, hold on, I've got notes here. Accessory use is determined by its relationship to the principal use. That would be his garage apartment. Considering the principal use and septic, septic plans and established two-bedroom living quarters, there's no need for additional living quarters and so forth. Um, so you need to check to make sure that storage building has no living quarters, no kitchen, no bathroom, no beds. Um, and also I would be very concerned that, um, wherever he is gonna set that will be pinned and recorded, um, because there is a, another established, um, accessory dwelling, which contains, um, sleeping quarters, kitchen, um, possibly tied into the septic where this, um, we're, we're at or very close to where he's planning on putting this new building.
And that's where the the, uh, uh, the the court order was to, for him to hire in a surveyor to put a plot plan showing all the, uh, structures, was hoping to have that uh, contract by April fifth.
Fifth, yeah.
And, you know, because he's filed an appeal, um, then we'll certainly have to go out and do that ahead of time.
Okay, that's it for now. I might have another comment later. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray?
Yes, uh, John, uh, uh, and I spoke about, uh, the taxes assessors, uh, and April first, which has passed, uh, whatever is there on April first, he has to be taxed on appropriately. Um, and he, by his own word, on a video and in newspapers, claimed that he has got one point six million dollars in infrastructure in that property. Now, uh, we, I, John and I had a conversation about this, and John said that because it was in the courts that the listers couldn't go in there. Well, that's absolutely not true, because the, uh, the deal is, if he refuses uh, an inspection by the listers, then they can put any number they want on his, on his assessment card and send it to him before grievance time, which is now. It has to be done now, not later, but now. And therefore, the, um, the fact that
That conversation is going on with, between Jonas and the listers at, right now. I think he has an appointment to speak to, uh, tomorrow, Jonas.
John said that because it was in the court, that the listers couldn't go in there. That's not right. They've already, he's already threatened the town and said that if anybody from the town goes on his property, they will be shot. So that's kind of a denial right there of, of access.
So let me take the opportunity.
We're working on that. The listers and, and the, and town and Jonas are working on coming up with that with a number for his property, Ray.
Jonas has his finger up.
Go ahead, Jonas.
I just want to respond to Ray, uh, because out of the, it's interesting you mentioned this. Out of the clear blue, on March twenty-ninth, I had received an email from Merrill Bent. She said, um, hi, Mike and Jonas, do you know whether Mr. Banye's tax assessment is going to go up this year on the basis of the claim value improvements? So I responded to Merrill, and I said, I said, I've had discussions about this with, uh, Lister, uh, Karen Folger. Like all employees, they're concerned about their public safety. They would like assistance with either a state trooper or have the town hire an independent assessor. I said to Merrill, how do you suggest the town should proceed? Uh, or should we place a value of one point six million dollars that he has mentioned in the papers? So her response to me was, hi, Jonas, I would use his own representation about the one point six million dollar value and avoid going to the property if he appeals and there is a site visit, then I agree that it should be with police escort. Then I received a an email from Lisa Wright, objecting to uh, assessing a value without, without site visit.
It's not a, then Lisa's better get herself up there.
But then I asked another question from the attorney and said that oh, okay, hold on here. This is, this is important. This is important. Does he agree with, oh, okay. So he basically took the task Lisa's comment and said, you know, you can do exactly what, uh, Ray said. You know, you don't have to do the visit, but again, I don't want to be, I'm not suggesting that we force a Lister or Lisa there. The town could hire an independent assessor or have consultation to make a decision to do the assessment, but I can tell you, Lisa's not comfortable with that. I wanted to find the, Rob Wellington's email. Hold on, I gotta let my dog out.
Okay, so we have a motion made on the floor to have assistance with Jonas to, uh, to go up to, uh, and do a site visit. Um, do we have any, let's, uh, let's hold on this motion right now to provide some law enforcement and two members uh, of the select board to, to go there. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob? Yes, okay. Um, motion carried, Kristen. So
By the way.
At, at this point. Yes, Jonas?
Bob Wellington, who is taking over for Merrill Bent, is in Arizona, uh, is out in the Southwest tomorrow, and he said that he would, he could do a, a phone conversation in the afternoon, but Lisa's not available. Lisa and I scheduled something between nine and ten o'clock, so.
Okay, so you and Lisa are gonna work through this and, and see where we get, and then you're gonna, you're gonna set up a, a site visit and go from there. The, the board has approved that, so I think we've touched on as much of this subject as we can for tonight. So do you have anything else as far as the, uh, as far as the, uh, okay, I see some hands up. Frank, you've been patient with your hand up. Frank?
Yeah, Mike, um, just for, generically, not pertaining to this case whatsoever, but across the board, across, all over the town, if someone has a primary residence, then the accessory building would be to the primary residence or the primary structure. And it was, this was cited, and you might want to go into definitions and review that. But Jonas may be able to clarify that as well as Harry or, uh, Keith or Jessica. Um, as to what the term accessory actually means. Do you need to have another building in place where then the, this building becomes accessory to that building, or can you have a standalone accessory building? That pretty much is, needs to be out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All over town.
Okay. Paul? Paul Thailander, you have your hand up, or Michelle? Paul, Paul Thailand, do you have your hand up? Or Michelle?
There, I'm not, I'm unmuted. If anybody would like to see what Banyai has done up on his land, he has a YouTube video where someone, he took someone around and showed them everything on his property. And it's on YouTube. I don't have the name of it right now, but if you typed in Slate Ridge or Daniel Banyai, you could probably find it.
Thank you. Provide the link, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will find the link and I'll get it out there.
And this is Michelle, very quick, as to what Frank said, as far as accessory, accessory building, that building has to be a pertinent to and directly related to the primary garage apartment. It can't be a standalone. If you've got a standalone, it's an accessory dwelling. So check that out.
Okay, thank you. Ray?
I, I don't know, I, I, I think I've pretty much said what I have to say tonight. I just, I'm very surprised that Lisa Wright cannot go up there and inspect that property. We hired her as an outside appraiser. That's her job. And if she can't do it, then maybe we should hire another outside appraiser. That's my opinion.
Okay.
I just, I just, I don't want to put pressure on, on Lisa or Karen or any town employee. I understand your frustration, Ray, believe me. But, you know, these, these folks have felt threatened, you know, and I can relate to that, been there, done that. I just, I, I understand what you're saying, right, but I, I feel for the listeners, I do.
Well, thank you. Do you have it? I see one more hand up there. Paul Thailand's hand is back up again, or did you just not take it down? I'm guessing they didn't take it down. Okay. Do you have anything else to report from a zoning administrator standpoint? Okay, all right, thank you. Planning Commission?
This is Jessica. There's no planning commission report today. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Keith?
Hi.
Hi.
Kristen, can you read my report, please? Oh, she, she has to do it because I don't have a copy here, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. Hold on one sec. Okay, so this is Kristen. Here is what's happening now in the world of the roads crew. The tree removal is complete on Herrick Brook Road and went very well. We seem to be leaving mud season behind with very little impact. Spring grading has started as most roads have settled out firm, actually very dry and dusty, so calc, calcium, I'm guessing.
Calcium chloride, yes.
Calcium chloride will be applied as we go. I ordered the new toolbar for the bit system that was discussed last fall, but haven't seen it yet. Everything is going well and we should be ready for our grant work deadline on Herrick Brook Road. I am meeting with Stephanie from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission on April 13th to get qualified for grants and aid on Kelly Hill Road. Looks like we are eligible for $14,000 in aid and this will be our late summer project. Take it away, Keith.
Anybody got any questions?
Keith, you could probably clarify a bit system because I'm not sure everybody understands what that is.
Last fall, we discussed that our bit system on the grader, which is a, it's a toolbar that bolts to the grader and then there's carbide bits that lock into it to do the grading as opposed to using a flat cutting edge. So we discussed last fall that we were going to be needing a new one and, well, I waited a while and ordered it, but it's slow coming. So we've got the old one back on and we're grading and it's, well, the toolbar is $2,600 and then it's, there's 72 bits that go into it that, a bit is a carbide tip. So they run $10 to $11 apiece. So the whole setup, normally we would go through a set of bits every year. The toolbar was on the cat grader that we had prior to this one that we purchased in 2003. So we've got our goodness out of it. And the benefit of having the carbide bit system is that we spend $1,000 a year on bits as opposed to $600 for a set of hardened blades that would go on the grader and we could go through potentially 10 or 12 of them sets of blades in a year. So that's the, that's the cost of it.
Thank you. Anybody else having questions for Keith? Keith, have we looked into getting a, a number for the value of the old truck?
I have, no, Mike. I mean, we're actually dragging the rock break with it right now just because it's here and we've cleaned it up and got a little more to do. But no, I haven't looked at establishing a value for it yet. So I mean, I, my assumption is when you're ready, it will go out to bid probably.
Right, but we should have some kind of idea.
Put a minimum bid on it when it goes.
Right, that's what I would think. So. I, if we're, if we're, if it's still functional and usable for a while, that makes sense, but we don't, you know, we don't need it hanging around too long.
No, 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 we can-
Have you arranged to get the new truck lettered?
Yes, Brewster Jade is working on it, so.
Okay, good. And the project's going good. What, what stage are you at now on the Herrick Brook Road project?
Oh, well, we've just, they've cut the trees last week. That was the big push last week. And like I said, it went very well. That was through Hunter excavation that we, the discussion we had last meeting about contracting them to get it done was well, very well worth it. So we went down through there in a little over three days and we were done, so. It didn't, go ahead.
When do you expect the excavator to arrive? When do you-
Well, I'm, I'm thinking we're going to get through our, our spring grading and our spring work here and, you know, we have to have the substantial completion done. And I'm thinking there's going to be at least two weeks of drawing slate rubble from West Pollitt and probably at least two weeks of gravelling over top of it when we're done. So that's probably going to be our, our June program. The grant process doesn't buy the gravel. So substantial completion doesn't mean the gravel has to be on it, but the rock will need to be in place and the work along the river will need to be in place. So I'm thinking in May, we'll be doing the prep work and then towards the end of May, we'll start putting the rock down and then gravel over it into June. So. And then with the town of Rupert helping us, we're going to have to pay them back and they have some stuff to do down there. So I think we'll probably do that and then bounce back to Pollitt for the Kelly Hill project later in summer, so.
So when do you think the excavator is going to show up on Herrick Brook Road?
In May. At or near the first, hey, at or near the first of May. That's the best I can say right now.
No, that's, I was just looking for something like that, something in that ballpark. Anybody else have any questions for Keith? I see Ray, you do well. See if any selectmen-
Yeah, I want to think, yeah, thanks, thanks Keith for changing that stop sign out.
Oh.
And, and also try to find out where the hell the road sign for Warren Switch Road went to, down by the schoolhouse, because it's not-
It's sitting behind the chair in my office, Ray.
That won't do anybody any good if they're-
Until recently, we couldn't set a signpost to put it back up.
Okay.
We have a list and it's on there and one of these days, that's going to be our project is redoing the signs. The next one down on Betts Bridge Road is missing as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any of the board members have any, oh, Tom Collard has a question.
Yeah, Chairman Mike, I'd like to ask Keith a question about the signs in West Pollitt. We're missing quite a few over here. Any of them been located or, or, or roundabout, you're coming up at Egg Street, I think you might, we might have discussed that before, but the yield signs there in the, in the roundabout, any of that on your radar?
Yeah, it's on our radar, Tom. I'd like to take more down to be honest with you because I think it's confusing down there, but, um, yeah, you're not talking about road signs, you're talking about the, the yield sign coming up from the Egg Street direction.
Correct, yeah, because on these weekends with all these people coming in to use these rails and the trails, it's getting pretty congested down there on a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning when they're in there. I just don't want the town to not be addressing it. If someone was to get hurt down there, they might come back on earth as a town, that's all. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Keith? All right, looks good. All right, thank you, Keith.
Thanks, guys.
Assessors report. Do we have anything from assessors, John?
No, just to highlight, we received warnings today for, Board of Civil Authority on purging the checklist. Deb will speak to that. But there's also a Board of Abatement request and to do it the same meeting. I don't know if it might be helpful if Rich or Jessica are aware of their responsibilities on the Board of Abatement and the Board of Civil Authority. And if there's literature that Deb can get them as far as abatement process, might be helpful. Well, we can speak to Deb when she comes on.
Okay, thank you. Town Clerk, I guess she's up, John.
Okay.
Other than my men, my, the memo that I sent to everybody, I don't really have anything to add to that unless anybody has questions.
Thank you, appreciate it. Talk to you later.
Could you read that memo, please, Kristen, to everybody?
I sure can. I just have to find it. Okay. Deb, or would you like me to read it, Deb?
Yes, I thought I had sent it to myself at home, but I, I didn't. I sent the link to the meeting, but I forgot to send myself my memo.
No, no problem. I can, I can read it. So the memo, this is Kristen memo from the town clerk. One, highway permits need signature. Two, you will all be receiving notification of a Board for the Abatement of Taxes meeting and a Board of Civil Authority meeting, both held on 4/27, one right after the other. The Board of Abatement meeting is for the mandated annual purge, the checklist. Three, received $630.86 from the Secretary of State's office for some expenses for town meeting, postcards and postage to mail them and absentee ballots. This was offered by the Secretary of State for expenses related to safety protocol that are not normally incurred during a town meeting election. Four, it is the first time in over a year that we are not preparing for an election and now that the workload has lifted a bit, Sue is back to her regular pre-COVID, pre-election hours. I am very grateful for the extra work that she put in as 2020 elections were much more labor intensive than ever before and it took both of us and sometimes Julie to stay on top of everything. Five, dog licensing is up a little bit from last year and at this point, any licensing will be assessed a late fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Or I mean, thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Does anybody have? For Deb? I guess you're off the hook, Deb. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tullander has his hand up.
Yes. Paul, do, Michelle, do you have a question or a comment?
This is Michelle Tullander. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Like I say, first time I've done this, takes me a few clicks. I, I'm a little bit behind the curve here because I'm learning how to use this Zoom, but I want to just go quickly back to the assessment, the assessors' notes. I believe assessment or foreclosure, but assessment certainly, is dictated by the Select Board to the town attorney. So the Select Board can call the town attorney and tell her that this is what we want to do. You might want to check that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Town Treasurer, Julie Matt.
Howdy.
Well, good evening.
Um, two warrants to be signed. The payroll warrant was for $9,367.63. The account payable was for $1,040,329.99. A million of that was the, a school payment. So no need to panic. General fund monies totaled $1,028,215.95.
Shut off the mic, so I-
The highway was $17,905.42 and wastewater was $3,576.25. I had on my memo what Deb had already mentioned, that we received the $630.86 from Vermont. And I just wanted to thank her for her work on the election and keeping track of those expenses and submitting them all. And then the only other thing I had was at the last meeting, Keith had asked a question regarding the exempt properties and the difference between statutorily exempt and how that affects us with our education taxes. So on properties that we vote on, we are collecting, we are still obligated to expense to the general ed fund, the whatever appropriate amount of education taxes on that property, even though we're not collecting that. So we have a local tax that we put in and everyone pays a little bit basically to pay the ed fund for those properties that we're not collecting taxes on. But for the statutorily exempt properties, they're actually removed from the grand list. So we are not obligated to pay any education taxes on that, on the value of those properties.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions for Julie? Looks like you're done, Julie. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yep.
Emergency Management Director?
Uh, this is Kristen. The warrants need approval.
Oh, God, I was trying to hustle too fast, wasn't I?
That's why, I'm here.
That's what you're here for, good thing. Somebody want to make a motion on the warrants?
John will.
Okay, do I hear a second?
This is Rich, Mike. I'll second that.
All right, Rich. Rich and John made a motion in a second to approve the warrant. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Approved. Excellent. Thank you, Kristen. Okay, Emergency Management Director, does Bob have a story?
Yes, this is Kristen, the Pollitt Emergency Management Director. Monthly report covering March of 2021 is as follows. COVID-19 updates continue to be posted daily to the Facebook page to keep residents informed. Participated in three COVID-19 conference calls this month with Vermont Emergency Management and other emergency entities. Initiated the annual update of the local emergency operations plan. Updated the RRPC, which is Rutland Regional Planning Commission, Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement Designated Official Form, as well as the Mutual Aid Agreement. Attended virtual meeting for Vermont Emergency Management Training and Exercise Working Group. And that's all from Bob Morleino. And I did just want to add, Mike, did you see that email that came through that was looking for, was looking for a suggestion from the town for the Emergency Management Director and/or Health Officer?
Yeah, Health Officer, I think it was, right?
I'll have to go back and look.
It was both?
I'll have to go back and look. Yeah, I'll touch base. I know that at one point in time, Bob was interested in passing the baton for those roles, but that was, I think, pre-COVID.
And just the Health Officer.
Yeah.
Emergency Management, he's pretty, he's good with, but I think the Health Officer, he'd just soon share- Emergency Management, I think he's pretty, he's good with, but I think the Health Officer, he'd just soon share with someone else.
Okay. Well, perhaps I'll send an email to him and include yourself and we can just make sure that we stay on top of that.
Great, thank you.
And that's all for the Emergency Management Director and um whenever you'd like, I can go on to Health Officer.
Go right down to Health Officer, please.
Okay, so the Polit Health Officer Monthly Report for March of twenty twenty one performed a rental housing code inspection at the request of a tenant. Violations found and a correction plan is in place with the landlord. Investigated a sewer leak into the basement of an unoccupied bank-owned building. Determined that the waste line of the home was open to the basement and due to a partial blockage of the town sewer system, the waste backed up into the residence. The town contractor repaired the blockage and the bank was contracted and instructed to cap off the waste line. It was also explained to the bank that the house would not be habitable until the basement is remediated and the waste lines reconnected to the town sewer. Bob Marlinow.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Anybody have any questions about any of those reports? Nope, okay wastewater. Um, Rich and I have uh been down to the wastewater and and Rich is doing a lot of investigating so he can understand better the the operation and and some possible improvements that we can make for for a better better system and and better reliability. I I'm not, I'm not really sure the right word to say, just make it better, right Rich?
Yeah, and just make the existing plant uh uh work more efficiently, you know, without making maybe some of the upgrades that that are on the table are not necessary. Just exhausting all possibilities to to use and uh, you know, make that plant run as efficient as we possibly can without throwing a bunch of money at it. So, that's the hope.
Yeah, so we've, he's had quite a few discussions, met some new people that have a a lot of information for him to gather and stuff and so it's, it's all good. And that's about it. Everything else we seem to be doing well with the uh affluent seems to be passing all the time and 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 we're doing our right there. And I see Julie Mack has a hand up.
Hi, um, I didn't see the whole thing, but I just briefly saw um a little blurb on the news about Vermont um having funds I think related to federal monies coming in for shovel-ready projects and one of them was specific to sewers systems, so I didn't know if you guys had um been aware of that.
Actually Jill was talking about that when we met with her. I think, what was it Bolton that she said Rich? They were doing an upgrade or something and
She's aware of that, yeah.
Okay.
They were doing an upgrade and they were way behind on what it was gonna cost and how much they needed and fortunately, they were able to to cap capitalize on some of that money. So I'm sure that I think she said that 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 whole money was kind of directed at uh building improvements and and being able to take on more building and because it was right there at the ski area where they wanted to build a whole bunch of new condominiums or something like that. That that was one of the key ingredients to get the funding.
Okay.
As far as that particular project went, but I'm sure she's she, if she knows the money's out there, she's, she's pretty good about staying on top of it, but I'll, I'll reach out to her and see or or you can if you want, wanted to just shoot her a quick email because you know what, what you saw. That would probably be, be better if you didn't mind.
Yep.
But thank you for keeping, thank you for keeping aware of that. Anybody else have any questions for the wastewater treatment plant? Nope, looks like we're good. Okay, what's next on the, on the list Kristen?
This is Kristen, next up is old or unfinished business. The, on the agenda, there was the con continuation of the inclusivity discussion. The um Rich had sent me a message about an update on the town-owned West Polit property. So I think there might be an update on that. I had also added radar-controlled speed signs, not for any specific reason other than just to keep it on the radar, not trying to be honey there, but um, maybe just to bring Rich and Jessica up to speed on that. And I know that we're actually doing pretty all right with time tonight, so I don't know how you guys um, or how everybody would like to attack that, but that's what we got for old and unfinished business.
Okay, so the inclu- inclusive, I've, the first one, could you pronounce that?
Inclusivity.
Okay, I've started to read over some of that and and I'm not sure, I I think this is, isn't something that we can enter into lightly. It's going to take a great deal of investigation to make sure that that should we decide to do something that it, that it's, that it's well planned and and thought out and doesn't end up having any negative effects. Kristen?
Thanks Mike, and um just I wanted to add to that I had sent um this, the Select Board members an email that included just some basic quick research that I had done about from the state level, some ideas of declarations and also what some other towns are doing. Um, so I did just want to add that. Just so that you're all aware that there were some other towns that have been starting to get this together. Um, there have also been several folks that have contacted me stating that if the town should be interested in putting kind of an auxiliary group together of folks that might want to spend a little bit of more devoted time talking about this before heading, you know, just attacking it as a board or wrapping the board's arms around it. They'd be interested in doing so, so I do have a list of folks um that I've just started to keep going. So thanks, that's what I just wanted to add there.
This is Jessica.
Jessica?
Yeah, um. Um, Kristen, I know that, I know that Maureen Brown is working with some people on just such a project. So if you might get sent in her direction, the people who are interested, she's um, she's going to be trying to get some people together in the next week or two in order to start looking at this. I think that the goal is perhaps if a citizen group pulls together um, if if it's the largest citizen group and if it pulls together a respective statement and then brings that to the Select Board, it wouldn't be the job of the Select Board to do the research itself. It would be the job of concerned citizens to do it and then the Select Board could say yea or nay. That's, that's my understanding of it. I do also have a bit of a report, I did some research, but I see that um, that Harley Cuddy has his hand up, so I will I will get on to my future research after this topic is um exhausted.
Harley?
Uh, yes, Chairman Mike, Harley Cuddy Hickory Hollow Road. The diversity inclusion, sorry?
Go ahead, please, yes.
Um, there's two aspects to this, one is a statement um that the town is possibly looking at. Uh, another is uh various ideas for inclusivity. I'm addressing the statement, um, the ideas I've heard for inclusivity uh sound very good. But the diversity, inclusion and equity statement under consideration is a values statement. I haven't found any examples of the Polit Select Board making official values statements. Polit's a diverse community, we hold a variety of opinions and political viewpoints. Any official values statement will reflect the values held by some residents, other residents may hold other values. This will be divisive. The inclusive approach is to avoid drafting divisive values statements. The people in the town who have other viewpoints might question whether Polit is open to their contributing to the town with anything beyond their tax payments. Having said that, if there is a group of citizens getting together to draft a statement, I would like to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you for that Harley, I'm sure that Kristen can help connect you with with Maureen's address so you can so you guys can connect and discuss it. Julie?
Hi, yeah, I am, I am not probably volunteering to be on another committee because I'm plenty busy, um, but I think in response to the issue um that Harley raised, I I do understand where that's coming from and I think that's kind of the opposite of what our goal is in this, because we don't want to be divisive. Um, and I think um, I just have been playing around with some wording that seemed like it would be a simple step and hopefully non-divisive. And I also, before I read what I wrote, I did want to mention that like this is stuff that's happening, um, not just in Polit but across the state and specifically at a state level. So um, doing, doing too much too fast, I think would be a poor idea just because we don't know what's coming down the pipe from the state if we're going to be mandated to do certain things. And what we have done doesn't, you know, line up with that, then we would just be throwing that out and starting over again anyways. Um, but I had written something that I thought was simple and hopefully non-divisive and I, since I'm not willing to be on another committee, would just read it now for the record so that um people that are interested can hear hear this and take it or leave it. But if you don't mind, I would, it's like really quick.
Go ahead, please do.
Polit is a diverse and vibrant community of farmers, artists, entrepreneurs and all nature of folks. As a community, we stand in support of diversity, inclusion and love and against prejudice and hate. We welcome and support all persons with no exceptions and are committed to the fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community.
Thank you for that. Okay. Is there any more discussion on this subject at this point, Jessica?
I I had committed last time to look into the issue about possibly having youth board members. And I have done a little bit of research on that and just want to make a quick report on that. Um, the other, there are many nonprofits in Vermont that have youth board members. I I know we're not a nonprofit, but it's very common among nonprofits to do that. There are two main ways they do this. They may either have an elected youth advisory board where um young people who are part of this nonprofit amongst each other elect a, a board of of only youth who then give, uh, serve as an advisory capacity to the main board. The other one is that there might be an appointed youth member or two, where the board itself will solicit um, applications from interested youth and then will select one or two of them to be on the board. Um, often as non-voting members, but sometimes as voting. Um, the State Board of Education does have by statute two youth members and one votes and one is a junior member who doesn't vote and they're appointed to two-year terms by the governor from a pool of applicants who have gone through an application process that by law must be open and accessible to all eligible students. Um, one town or city in Vermont that does have youth members on city boards is Burlington. Burlington permits one high school-aged youth as a non-voting member on the following groups. The Police Commission, the Board of Registration of Voters, the Neighborhood Planning Assembly, the Community Justice Center, the Planning Commission and the Library Commission. And for their application, the youth will apply and list their top choices and say why they want to join a town board and also a bit about their work or volunteer experience. So that's the, that's the research that I was able to find about what other folks in Vermont are doing about youth members. I will try to look into this a little bit um before next time and I don't suggest that we make a decision right now. But I, I stand by my concept that if we were able to offer some sort of youth advisory membership to a number of the town committees and commissions, kind of like that list of ones from Burlington, you know, the library, the Planning Commission, the Select Board and that we might have youth advisory members, I think, who would apply to an application process. I think that's kind of what I'm leaning toward right now. But before, before actually bringing this to the Select Board for any kind of vote, I do want to talk with a couple of youth in the community. And I do have some leads on who to talk to, so I want to do that um before a future, before a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna back up to where we were before Jessica spoke, um when what, some of what Julie said there, uh, the guiding principle for the Select Board through this should probably be the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And they actually have one member on the Governor's Commission, so they're well aware of what's going on. And I actually have spoken to some people up there recently and they kind of echoed what Julie said, that trying to do too much too fast may not be the best way to go because this is an evolving situation that they're just playing catch-up on now. And when that happens and they're caught up, they will have sample language and 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 all of these benefits that you guys can review that you may also be getting from your concerned citizens, which is good, but in the end, they will have all aspects covered and and that as the Select Board is who you should probably be reaching out to to uh, to get your guidance through this process, so just a comment.
Thank you Keith. Anybody else have any more discuss- uh, discussion on that? Okay, the trailer. What did you find when you went to look at the trailer, Rich?
Yeah, so I went down with Bob and uh took a bunch of pictures and looked for anything of any value. And uh, I mean, there was, we didn't find anything that had any value. Uh, we went through the uh, the trailer itself, went through the backyard. Um, it's just a bunch of garbage all over that's really just a liability to the town, so I think we oughta we oughta start taking steps to get it cleaned up.
Okay. So, the next, the next thing is we gotta clean up a whole bunch of scrap steel around and get an old trailer removed and garbage and all the above.
A lot of garbage.
Know? A lot of garbage. Does anybody have any good ideas on who we should reach out to or? Well, the first person that came to my mind was Clarence Ritchie because he has he has roll-offs, that he handles garbage and he also handles scrap steel and he also has equipment to load all the garbage and and clean up the property and dress it all up and leave it in a presentable manner. I don't really know too many other people in this area that, that do that kind of stuff, honestly. Is everybody okay with with reaching out to Clarence and seeing if he could if he could give us an idea on what it would cost, that the way, the way everything goes with that with that uh tax property is whatever money we have to put into it, including legal fees, et cetera, I'll end up being factored into the, the sale costs. And then we can sell the property for exactly what we have into it and if there's more than that, it would have to be returned to the previous owner. So, I'm, right now, I'm just looking for a for approval to to look into, see if if Clarence Ritchie would would give us a, an idea on a estimated cost to clean that mess up. How does the board feel about that? Okay, Jessica's got a hand up.
I just said thumbs up, that seems fine.
John?
Yeah.
You're okay with that, Rich?
Yes.
Okay, Bob?
Mike, I'm not sure that we put that in the form of a motion or we're just all in agreement on that, but I
I'm just in agreement because I'm just, I'm just getting, I'm just getting a price from him. I'm not, I'm not doing, we're not acting on it, just getting some kind of estimate.
Right, I just wondered whether we could figure out a way to just keep the ball rolling here instead of dragging it out another two weeks and another two weeks and stuff, so um, if we need to put someone in charge of seeing it through, if if it doesn't, you know, if if we don't get the seeing it through, if if it doesn't, you know, if if we don't get the right feedback from Clarence and we go with with someone else or whatever, but it just, it really needs to be cleaned up down there. The things that Rich and I saw should not, the neighbors should not have to uh deal with down there.
So, okay, so you, do you know of anybody else? I mean, who else would do something like that?
I I don't know that anyone else beside, besides calling a, you know, a larger company that to just drop off dumpsters and then, you know, even our town crew or someone would have to fill the, smash everything and fill the dumpsters. But I just, I just wanted to keep the ball rolling and and just initiate something if it was a fair rate to just get it done without dragging it out for for a couple of months here.
So, so if we come back with a fair rate and we just touch base with our Select Board members, we can, we can approve something like that under $10,000 without having it to go out to bid and stuff like that, correct?
Right, right. I think.
Is that correct, John?
Yeah, so as far as I know.
Okay. So, so maybe that would be the thing to do. We'll talk to Clarence, and then if it seems like a reasonable rate, we can just discuss it amongst ourselves um one at a time and and uh and just authorize that. Let's see a couple of hands up. Frank?
Yeah, it's if it's a health risk, some of that stuff's just piled up there, then obviously you need to move forward without any talking about it. Uh, just get it done. And uh, the other thing is, is the the building that's there. Um, there's not a very big lot, if I recall. And the only thing that might be able to do with a new buyer is to replace that particular structure, and Keith might be able to clear this up. I think he mentioned something to that effect before. Uh, so, so the question is, if you're gonna leave the structure up and any potential buyer can take it down and replace it, uh, would be up to them. Uh, but the way the bylaws are set up, they might not be able to put anything else up there. Thank you.
No, I think, I think that trailer needs to go. I'm sure that it's a preexisting building lot, so we should be able to build something on it. And uh, that trailer is a mess, and it it's more of a hazard than than anything, so it needs to to go away.
I think they have one year, Mike.
Right.
You you lose your preexisting status after one year. So I don't, don't know that the only thing that would restrict it is there is a 40 foot minimum lot width in in the zoning regulations, but being preexisting, they could replace what's there within one year, and they may only have to even get the permit within one year to follow right to the letter. But I'm thinking it's a usable lot that somebody can do something with if they so choose, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ray?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that was a a lot that was owned by the Gallagher boys. Uh, years ago, a little, little house there and uh uh, then they got torn down and they put the trailer in there. Um, and I think that if you can get uh Bud and Clarence go in there for for $10,000 to get rid of that trailer and that crap that's down there, I mean, it's a, it's a real uh health hazard. Um, and if you can get them to go in there for for $10,000 or less, then by all means, get it done. I'm all for it.
Rich, would you have a chance to meet Clarence down there at some point?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to contact him or?
Yep, I will. I'll get a hold of him uh tomorrow morning, and we'll set up with time to to meet down there.
Okay, that would be awesome. Thank you. Kristen?
Yes, thank you. So do you want a motion out there for all of this? Or do you want me to just reflect that the board unanimously agreed that Rich would carry, continue on?
Yes, the the board unanimously agreed that we would talk to uh to Clarence Ritchie about uh getting a price for the demo, the cleanup of that lot, and then because it's under the the limit, we can, then we can decide before the next meeting if if we need to just act upon it because of the health, associated health risks and et cetera.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. I just wanted to be sure I had it down accurately. Thank you.
This is Frank.
Good, thank you. Yes, Frank.
Uh, you guys can't really decide together, uh, because that's an open meeting law violation.
That's what I said.
You could, you could appoint, you could, you could appoint Rich and Bob to make the decision to go forward, maybe with with the authority, the same as you give Bob the authority to sign stuff. Okay.
Yes, we already clarified that. It it can only be responded to individually. So, okay. So now we're moving forward to that. Speed signs. Do we want to just order the damn speed signs and be done with it? Somebody want to make a motion? I mean, we really, we've been wanting to get them for quite some time now.
Yeah, I will. May I, Mike?
Yes, please do.
This is Kristen. I will, one more time, my best pal at Elon City. Um, I think his name is Hugo, who I'm still working with, and I will reach out to him one more time to get the most updated price quote. Um, it should be about the same, and I think that we, I mean, we've had it in the line. It's where you, the town has had it as a budget item now. And it seems like a good time.
Right. That's what I would say. So you'll get, you'll get. Oh, Julie says we can still make the motion to purchase, and if you get, do we, do we know the number? Uh, the condition of the match price. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Mike, I'll make the motion that we proceed.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second. Jessica.
Jessica, what second? And we're just waiting for the number from Kristen.
Oh. I just say what the condition was. Not off the top of my head. Can I just indicate in the motion that it's under the condition of the matching preexisting quote price? And I can.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was like 37.
Yeah, it was like 3,700.
Kristen?
Yeah.
Check with me before you go forward, please. Um, some of that stuff can be bought through the state of Vermont through central purchasing at the state bid price because they've already bid those out and have a bid price from perhaps a different company. But if they, if what you're looking for is included, there's probably some savings there. So just, just run it by me and let me look into it when when you know what you're doing. It won't take but a day to get an answer, so.
Yeah, I will do, Keith, and I'll send you, because they've been giving me itemized invoices of what everything is that is included with the packages. Um, so I'll send that along to you so you can see that list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, so we got a motion made and seconded to buy two radar speed signs for the same price that we have been quoted right along and that we have budgeted, which is that we think around 3,700 each. Um, all in favor? John?
Yes.
Chris, uh, Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And approved. Thank you.
Uh, Mike?
Yes, John.
People should be aware that we posted our road for slow turtles. So for people to be careful driving by our house, so.
Okay, excellent. Got the whole families out already this year, John?
Well, it's, it's, it's our yearly, yearly event, so uh
All right.
Things are fast up here.
Okay. Good. Jennifer Sullivan, I think I see her give us a thumbs up, but I don't. We're not 100% sure if we're, if we're gonna have them on on our side of the town yet or not, Jennifer, but two is, two is coming this year, and two of those signs are are budgeted for next year too, so. Um, for the west side. Uh, format of the meeting, is is that what's next, or is there any more old business?
Um, this is Kristen. I'm just catching up, but I don't have any anything else.
Okay.
Under old business. The format of the meeting, which you guys are welcome to go on without me, um, was regards, in regards to Rich, what we had been emailing about regarding just in person meeting and prospects of all of that and um whatnot. So that is, that is what that agenda item means.
Okay. Do you want to comment on that, Rich?
Yeah, I just didn't know how everybody felt about the board getting together for the meetings. You know, allow the public to still zoom in. Um, it just, I think it'd be easier for us to communicate and uh, you know, just might be, the meeting might be a little more organized. I just didn't know how you guys felt about it.
Well, well, right at this point, one of the things is that in order to, if we met at a meeting, we would have to allow the public to come into the meeting. So it it wasn't like the board could just get together and then the public still had to zoom. If we, if we got together, the the public would would have to be allowed to come to the meeting. And and then that opens up a whole bunch of of like cleaning procedures and stuff like that, that that we would have to accomplish and and uh, you know, the social distancing is still in place, et cetera. So my feeling is that at this point, I, as much, I feel that the Zoom meeting is is still a functional way. Um, I know that sometimes the the discussions seem to drag out a little bit more and and everything doesn't get cleared up quite, quite as as easy as it does in person. But I think until, until we can get this a little bit farther behind us, I think my opinion uh for myself would be to stay with our system. Jessica, do you want to comment on that?
This is Jessica. Um, I, I listened to the governor's press conference earlier today, and he's just issued new guidance for how Vermont is going to be opening up as we move toward July the 4th. And I believe that as of May 1st, there's going to be new guidance for town boards that they will, they will become under a slightly different sort of how, um, how many people can be in a building and that kind of stuff. So maybe after May 1st would be a good time for us to reconsider this. Also, by that point, I'll have a shot. Um, I'm personally not willing to gather together with other people until I'm vaccinated. But hey, by May, we all should be if we want to be.
Okay. So one of the other things that I feel strongly about is is the fact that I honestly feel we have a better attendance at the meetings due to the fact that we're, or these Zoom meetings, we have a stronger attendance than we did at a lot of our regular board meetings throughout the years. So I think that when we do go back to an in person meeting, that we really need to have a Zoom option so that the people that choose to stay home can still join the meetings because I certainly have seen a lot of different, different faces at these meetings than than I'd ever seen at at the in person meetings. So. Anybody else have any? Kristen?
Yeah, this is Kristen. That is something that I would love to put on the, you know, just to plant a little seed for the board members. I also think that, I mean, I know Frank has brought this up. I just saw his hand raised, but I feel like now that the world has gone virtual with this option, I don't foresee it going away. I think a lot of people love that. Um, as I've said to some of the board members, you can, you know, wear your pajama pants if you want during these meetings, and no one will know. And it's a really easy commute home at the end. So I do think that the board should consider what that's going to take from a town's perspective to continue virtual. I think that, you know, Peg TV should traditionally, before COVID, came to the meetings and recorded, but if we're going to continue with Zoom, that will also require additional camera equipment and something. I don't have enough knowledge about it myself, but that, I think, is something that the, you know, the board as a group, along certainly with my assistance, should start looking into what that's going to require. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Uh, we're, we're not under, are we under public comments yet?
Or? No.
Okay, then on this comment, I was gonna say the same thing in public comments. Is, is that what Kristen's referring to is, I think I referenced that maybe some of the COVID money coming through should be appealed for to buy some equipment, which we may need in order to do a homogenized or hybrid physical meeting, digital meeting uh platform, once everybody goes back or a Select Board, or most of them go back to meeting, or in the Planning Commission, go back to meeting at Town Hall. And that might include buying a large screen, which some of the, has been discussion for a number of years. Um, so that a presenter doesn't have to bring a slide projector and a slide screen. They could actually just plug their their computer in, and it would pop up on the screen. Uh, the screen, and it could be used as in in a dual capacity, such as the Planning Commission is using, showing the unified bylaw document and going through it. So this could be figured out. Uh, and and an idea of what a price would be for that, and to see if there's any grant money or any public money to assist the town to do it. And uh, uh, and right now we don't know, so that is worthy of investigation.
We'll certainly keep that in mind. Thank you. Uh, I guess we're on new business still, right, Kristen?
Yes, this is Kristen. The next item was the update from the town attorney.
Okay. Would you please read that? Could you please read that? I didn't bring a copy of it home.
Oh, which? I don't know.
From the one that I sent you this afternoon from Jessica Glass Pollock? I think, John, you got it too, right? That was, it was regard to some questions that John had been, uh.
Just, um.
I think everybody, did everybody else get it on the board?
I got it as well, yes.
Okay, because I, I was trying to, trying to send it out during the course of the day when I had a chance, and I I wanted to make sure that everybody got it.
Okay. Um, so the Q and A for Polit Select Board?
Yes.
Is that what you, okay. Um.
Yes.
So this is from Jessica Glass Pollock at Green Mountain Law. Question number one, there are questions about a possible appeal of the court's recent ruling. I'm sorry, this is titled Q and A for Polit Select Board Regarding Mr. Banyer. One, there are questions about a possible appeal of the court's recent ruling. When does it take effect? The day the ruling was made or the day upon the served receipt of it by DB? The day the ruling was made, but it is still subject to appeal. Mr. Banyer has not requested a stay pending appeal, and so he is required to timely comply with the court's order. He could still request a stay for the duration of the appeal, which would likely be granted. Two, and how many days does Mr. Banyer have within which to appeal? The court recently granted Mr. Banyer's request for an extension of time to appeal, and so he has until 4:00 PM on Wednesday, May 5th to file a notice to appeal with the court. Three, DB has supposedly filed an application for a zoning permit. Is he eligible to receive one, especially if one is constructed for construction that is involved with the court's ruling and already built or proposed to be constructed for unpermitted use? Mr. Banyer is not entitled to any zoning permit for activities that are covered by the judgment order. If he has applied for a permit for construction or a use not covered under the judgment order, then the ZA will need to assess whether he is entitled to a permit under the zoning bylaws, which is an issue separate from the judgment order. Four, April 1st is approaching, the normal grand listing date. How does Polit handle access to properly and safely appraise the improvements? Can our assessor assign a value to the property without viewing it if she is denied access by DB or if our assessor refuses out of her personal safety? In general, listers do not enter a property unless they have received permission from the property owner. In any case where permission to enter is not granted, the lister should follow standard values and techniques to assess fair market value in the absence of a site visit using known information regarding the property and its improvements as of April 1st of this year. In other words, the improvements in the property, on the property, excuse me, as of April 1st can all be included in the valuation, notwithstanding the court's order. Statements Mr. Bany made about what is on the property can be considered for this purpose. Thank you. That's the end of the document.
Okay. So that, did that clarify thing, the questions that you had, John, that people had came to you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. The next thing, Jessica, you have an update for us on the Pu- West Polit WiFi.
Yes, I'll, I'll try to be quick. I know we don't have much time. All right, um, this is an issue, this is Jessica. This is an issue that came up because Deb forwarded an email to the select board. About a last minute opportunity to get more WiFi hotspots of the kind that we have at the library. And, um. And we don't currently have a WiFi hotspot that works in West Polit. So I, because I wasn't able to like reply at all because of open meeting law. I was, I got in touch with Mike and we talked a bit and I also spoke to Deb at the town office. Um, I checked with the West Polit Fire Department to see if they were interested in having one and they were not. It was not something they were interested in hosting, but Mike suggested that perhaps we could put a WiFi hotspot. On the wastewater plant, which already has internet access. And that then it could reach across the street to the rail trail parking lot, which would be very convenient, both for people. Who had to drive in to use the internet, who might live in outlying parts of West Polit. They wouldn't have to drive all the way to Polit. And also it could be convenient for people using the rail trail to be able to get a public WiFi spot right there. So, um. I went ahead and pursued an application. Um, of this, to 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 get this WiFi hotspot. It would be free of charge. The group is called. Information Technology Disaster Resources Center, and the program they're doing is called Project Commit. And throughout the year when of COVID, they have put in a lot of uh WiFi hotspots for free. Um, for areas where which especially which are underserved with internet. Um. We would, like I said, they would do the installation for free. The only thing we would have to keep on paying for would be our internet subscription, which we already have. We, um, we have an internet subscription. I checked with Julie through the, um. Through consolidated communications, does the business internet or the wastewater? And. So in order to go ahead with this, if we want to pursue this. Um, I spoke this morning to Dustin Lee with this, um, group. They are gonna be in Vermont for a couple more weeks, so it would happen within the next couple of weeks. They would be able to give about a one day's heads up to when they would need to be let into the wastewater plant. Because they would have to get at the computer there in order to put this hotspot technology on it. The things that they would need to know before going ahead, and if we decide to go ahead with this, I can get Dustin this information tomorrow. Would be the speed of the existing internet. Um, they would need to know how Jill uses the internet in there, cuz I assume she's the person who mostly uses it. Specifically whether any of the critical functions of the wastewater plant itself are connected to the internet. If any of the machines have internet connectivity. And would also need to know, um, if the installers are giving one day's access. Like they're calling and saying, you know, tomorrow we're gonna come, would Mike be the best person to let them in, or is there someone else? Who would be available to let them? So that's, that's my report. What I would ask for is for us to decide if we want to go ahead with this. I strongly urge that we do, as I think it would be very useful to many people. And in West Polit and also people who come in for the rail trail. And if we do decide to do this, I would need to be either to get this information from those on the select board who know it. Or find out who I need to talk to so I can get this information to the Project Connect people as soon as possible. This is a very last minute thing, but that's, that's how it pans out.
Okay, does somebody wanna make a motion or does somebody have more discussion about this or?
This is Frank real quick.
Yeah.
Um. The sewer plant would be ideal location and obviously, uh, you don't wanna, you don't need to extend the power of the radio for. WiFi over into New York State. Uh, so you might be able to include an omnidirectional or Yagi antenna. Which would direct the radio waves even at a stronger level towards the parking areas. And they might get better reception and better and higher bandwidth by using those from that facility. Uh, and the distance this required.
Pretty sure the installers will do their normal install and if somebody in New York State gets it, well, lucky for them.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Frank. Uh, when I spoke to them today, they, they're pretty certain they can cover most of that parking lot that's directly across from the wastewater plant. They're not sure if they can reach the parking lot that's on the circle, that other little parking lot, but they'll try, but they're not sure they can get it that far, so.
This is, this is Frank. I've worked with this bit, stuff a bit, and a Yagi and omnidirectional antennas are not expensive. And you can set it up so that you could just like.
Okay, Frank, they're giving us the stuff. They're gonna give us what their standard stuff and they're gonna do the best job they can. We, we can't ask for more than they're gonna give us, but thank you for that. I understand, uh. Where you're going.
Thank you and you're welcome.
Does somebody wanna make a motion that that we proceed with this or does somebody have any? Other comments that they wanna?
I'll make a motion. John will make a motion.
Okay, John made a motion that we proceed with having the the WiFi hotspot installed in the sewer plant. Do I have a second?
Mike, this is Rich. I'll second that.
Rich will second that. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
So this is Jessica. Who do I, who do I talk to to get this information about? The speed of the internet, about the critical functions of the wastewater if they're connected to the internet?
Um, the speed of the internet is probably like about three or four. It's dreadful over on this side. Um, but uh, I really don't know. I, I really don't know. I, I know that that we have a great deal of issue with it here at at the house. But, uh. I, I don't even know how to tell, tell what the speed. I don't know if Consolidated could tell you or.
Yeah, I have our account number, but I don't have our login information, so I can't, I can't contact. Um, Consolidated in order to get information directly from them, cuz I can't prove that I, that. That I'm associated with the account. Who would have that login info?
Maybe Julie? Consolidated and then Jill. Jill, Julie, do you have the login information from Consolidated?
I spoke to Julie this morning and at the time she didn't say she had it.
I do, I don't have any like online login. You're gonna have to call them and. Well, it's gonna be a whole day.
Yeah.
Start it all over.
So.
Awful.
So I, since I'm not a wa- wastewater liaison person, um. How often does does Jill work in that building ever and how often is she there?
She'll be there tomorrow, actually. She comes every Wednesday and then one of her employees comes the other day. I will, uh, I will send you a a contact.
Yes, send me the contact, cuz if I can get a hold of her and get this specific information, I can give it to this guy Dustin tomorrow. And then he can get us on the list. Uh, this is not a hundred percent guaranteed that they will be able to go forward with it. But it sounded very promising that they would be able to do it. They have about forty or fifty people in Vermont. Who are on their list and were among that, so can get through all those in a couple of weeks. They'll do it.
Okay, well, it's worth a try, I think, so.
All right, yeah, thank you. Send me, send me Jill's info and I will contact her tomorrow.
This is Frank quickly on the bandwidth. The DSL, I talked to two weeks ago, did a telephone representative when he was working on the box in West Polit. And he says the DSL maximum speed is about three megabits per second. However, the cable connections at the base rate get you about two hundred megabits per second, just as a little FYI. Thank you.
Okay. So. That all makes sense to you, Jessica?
Yep, it does. I've got it noted down. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, and what else? I guess that was, that was it for that. What other? What other, uh? Things that we have to bring up?
This is Kristen. That was, that was everything on the agenda, except for public comment.
Okay, so does anybody have any public comment? I guess not. I guess we must have covered everything already, huh? All right.
So they went to bed.
Nobody, nobody's talking, so I'm guessing we must have covered everything. Uh, right.
Had a lot of public comment already.
All right, great. Did you enjoy working on those grants? Jessica, do you enjoy that kind of stuff?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm an administrator at heart.
Oh, perfect. Would you be interested in maybe helping out on other stuff that comes along?
Yeah, and I was thinking that we, we kind of need a policy or something for dealing with last minute stuff like this that came up. Cuz I felt a little weird going forward with it myself, but we couldn't meet as a group to talk about it, so. I don't know if that's something we could designate a person for in the future, like how we designate Bob to sign stuff. Like we could designate a person to look into last minute things like that that come up. It's not a discussion for today, but I just wanted to toss it out there.
Okay, excellent, but thank you. So. Well, that's really great that you're, that that you're good and and at that because we don't always have. Kristen doesn't have enough time to always do it very well, you know, to get enough time in on the day and if. If that's something that you're comfortable with, maybe possibly you could help her from time to time and.
Of course, once I go back full time for my own work, I will have less time, but.
Right. Cool, excellent.
With our force line.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the problems we all run into is finding enough time in the day to to put enough energy into what we need to. So, Kristen, you have?
Yeah, and if you don't mind, so basically, I mean, I, grants has always fallen under the umbrella of my role and. I think, as I mentioned at the last meeting, it is not my strongest muscle that I flex. It's, you know, just. Looking it up and getting it all. It just, I would love to be better at it, so that would be great, Jessica, if we could maybe tag team some things.
We could work together sometimes. I like it.
Great.
Super, thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything that they wanna discuss tonight?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
That's a great idea.
I'll second that motion.
Bob seconded that motion. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much. Have a great.